I will now call the May 6, 2018 Blue Springs City Council meeting order. If you would stand with me, observe a moment of silence, and I will lead you in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Want to welcome you in attendance, as well as those that might watch it later on YouTube. Next, we have the consent agenda unless our items need to be full, except a motion for approval.
Same move.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Sir, thank you. Roll call, please.
Council members, Kayler?
Aye.
Levissay?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edminton?
Aye.
Cole Pepper?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have a public hearing that combines three items into one, but it would be three separate bills.
The city has the following exhibits to enter into the record. Council information form with attachments, staff report with attachments, affidavit of publication in the examiner on March 9, 2019, application with attachments, 185-foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, copy of letter sent to said property owners, title forms, land use section Blue Springs code ordinances by reference, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference, bill number 4655 approving the rezoning, bill number 4656 approving the amended PUD concept plan, and bill number 4657 approving the industrial development project. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Okay, these three items on a public hearing are release of Novel Place at White Oak Marketplace. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before this evening, our two requests related to the Novel Place at White Oak Marketplace project, which is a proposed multifamily housing development that is planned for independent senior living. The subject property is 5.46 acres and is located approximately 230 feet south of Southwest Sunset Avenue and immediately west of Price Chopper. The first request is to rezone the subject property from GBPUD, which is General Business Plan Unit Development, to MF-18 PUD, high-density multifamily, in a planned unit development. The PUD concept plan for White Oak Marketplace was approved in 2015, which permitted up to 180 multifamily units on approximately 7.5 acres, with a condition that the property be rezoned to the appropriate multifamily zoning district. Based on the proposed residential building type and density, the MF-18 zoning district is most appropriate. The Conference of Plan designates the property as part of a distinct destination, which accommodates a mix of land uses, including high-density residential near major corridors and intersections. The C1 specific plan designates the property as high-density residential, which is intended to accommodate multi-unit residential buildings with a net density of greater than 12 units per acre. Staff does believe that the proposed development and site meets the review criteria for rezoning to the MF-18 zoning district, as supported by the Conference of Plan and Specific Plan. The rezoning would set a positive precedent for integrating high-density residential development into planned developments with a mix of land uses along major corridors, which is supported by the 2019 chat report, which recommended transforming commercial corridors into walkable mixed-use environments. Staff also believes that the rezoning and proposed development plan is compatible with adjacent zoning districts, which include a mix of retail, office, and apartments. The second request is for an amended PUD concept plan for the 5.46-acre development. The main reason for this amendment is due to the changes in building type and site layout from the 2015 proposal, which included three separate buildings at that time, with 60 units in each building. Although the initial White Oak Marketplace PUD concept plan was approved under the 1996 UDC, the project requires, since the project does require rezoning, staff is reviewing it under the 2015 UDC. The proposed building, proposed project includes a single three-story mid-rise apartment building with 134 units, a net density of 24.54 units per acre. Access to the site will be provided, at the top-left corner shows the wider view of the entire White Oak Marketplace, with Sunset Avenue at the top, and then on the east is Southwest 7 Highway. Access to this property will be through private access drives through the Price Chopper property, as well as from Sunset Avenue. And those access drives do have a platted easement that was platted as part of the original first plat of White Oak Marketplace, which included the Price Chopper property, which ensures that the site does remain accessible from public right-of-way in the future. As part of the PUD concept plan, the applicant is requesting a few modifications, most of which are related to the building typology standards for a mid-rise apartment building. Those are bulleted on the screen. That does include waiving the minimum frontage width and the installation of a frontage type, as no frontage is provided along a public street, increasing the max lot area from 2 acres to 5.46 acres, and increasing the number of units in a single building from 120 units to 134 units. The final modification request is related to parking. Multifamily parking is based on the number of bedrooms per unit. Based on the proposed mix of units, with one and two bedrooms, the site is required 197 parking spaces. The site plan does show 197 parking spaces on the site, however, due to experience with similar developments in the region, the applicant is requesting to defer the installation of 48 spaces and only install 149 spaces. The parking spaces that they are proposing not to install and defer to future if needed are at both the north and south edge of the site. Of the 149 spaces, 55 spaces will be provided in covered parking, or covered carports. There are six different buildings, which are the kind of darker gray areas around the perimeter of the site. The applicant does anticipate the average age of residents will be in the 80s, with some residents not having personal vehicles, which is the primary reason for them requesting this reduction. Most units, regardless of size, whether they're one or two-bedroom, will likely be single-person occupancy. Should there be a higher-than-expected demand for parking, the site can still accommodate the deferred parking in the future. The site is required one bike parking space per unit. The applicant is requesting to reduce the number of required bike parking spaces from 134 to 20 spaces, which will be located near main building entrances. Similar reductions have been approved in similar developments in the past. Conceptual building elevations include a three-story, 109,000-square-foot apartment building. Entrances to each unit will be accessed through internal corridors. Many units will include outdoor balconies or patios. Exterior building materials include a mix of brick, stucco, lap siding, and shingle siding. The H shape of the building creates courtyards on both the north and south side of the main corridor, which provides shared amenity spaces for residents. Building design includes variations in massing, projections, riff lines, materials, and other architectural details, which meet and exceed the intent of the residential design guidelines. The overall design will also complement the retail portion of the adjacent White Oak The site is required a minimum of 15% of the lot area to be dedicated to active open space, which amounts to .82 acres. The site plan does show .87 acres' worth of open space, provided in three pocket parks. There's a larger park to the south, which will have a outdoor pavilion for special events for the, for the building, and there will also be the north and south courtyards that will have several different amenities, including seating, game areas, covered structures, and fire pits. Amenities and landscaping will be reviewed as part of the PUD final plan and site plan design review. Minimum 15-foot landscape buffers are required along all, along all four property boundaries, as all the surrounding properties are zoned GB, general business. Two of the carport structures out on the front of the building encroach two feet into the landscape buffer. The applicant may request approval of that setback through an alternative compliance landscape plan, through the site plan design review process by the planning commission. Staff does believe that the project meets all the concept plan review criteria, and that the requested modifications are appropriate in a high-density residential infill site. The project positively represents planning and urban design principles, and is the type of redevelopment that is encouraged and supported by the Conference of Plan, the Specific Plan, and the previously approved White Oak Marketplace PUD, as well as the chat report. The planning commission did hold a public hearing for both requests on March 25. No one from the public spoke in favor or opposition to the request. There was discussion on some of the operations of the building, including rents, staffing, and other onsite offerings. Concerns were also expressed regarding the parking reduction request. The applicant did say the average age, the average age of residents is generally in the early to mid-80s, and many residents will not drive. There will also be transportation provided to services, which helps justify the reduction in parking. The planning commission did recommend approval of both the rezoning and the PUD concept plan by a vote of nine to one. Staff does recommend approval of the requested rezoning and approval of the PUD concept plan for Novel Place at White Oak Marketplace, subject to three conditions in the staff report, and I will turn it over to Mr. Cole to present the industrial development plan.
Great, Mayor, and members of the City Council, thank you for the time this evening. The third and final component of this public hearing is the applicant requesting approval of a bill for an industrial development project for the benefit of Novel Place Blue Springs LLC, authorizing the city to issue taxable industrial revenue bonds, the maximum principal amount of $23 million, and authorizing certain other actions in connection with the issuance of those bonds. The proposed development essentially closes the circle, if you will, on the originally planned and contemplated November 17, 2014, White Oak Tax Increment Financing Plan, which included both retail and residential uses. The project under consideration, as Matt suggested, will be roughly 110,000-square-foot, three-story senior living facility, including 134 units of new dwelling units. It's anticipated that this facility, as Matt has mentioned, will provide meals and transportation for the convenience of its residents. The existence of the residential component is also anticipated to provide additional economic benefit to the entire White Oak development, as additional residents will be in close proximity to the retail service amenities already in place. The Chapter 100 tax abatement, which has been requested, is a bit unique in this particular case, as it's been allowed, as it's been requested, not for the tax abatement that typically comes with this, but for an ancillary benefit that's a component of Chapter 100 tax abatement, and that is for the sales tax exemption on construction materials. As such, the developer will provide payments in lieu of taxes, or pilots in the amount of all real property taxes to all taxing jurisdictions, while only utilizing the sales tax exemption during the construction phase of the project. As such, the developer will realize zero real property tax abatement benefits. It's anticipated that the actual sales tax exemption savings will amount to roughly $140,000 over all taxing jurisdictions, of that $9,262 would be exempt from the city of Blue Springs. Our city's bond counsel is here, as well as the developer's attorney, as well as the development team, which I believe they have a presentation as well, so we'll answer any questions that you may have.
Counselors, are there any questions of Tom or Matt?
Yes, sure.
Councilman Fowler?
Yes, a couple of questions. I guess I want to go back to Matt real quick. We start with him. There is a age restriction on this?
Under zoning, we do not put any kind of age restrictions on it. That would be up to the applicant, and they could do that privately, but publicly, we don't put any age restrictions on any zoning.
Does the city have any guarantee that there will be age restrictions?
Only from what the applicant will provide.
Okay, so we'll ask the applicant when he comes up.
All right. The, there is in here that, I guess I'm trying to put together the original acreage and the original number of units. It says, increase the maximum, one of the things that they're asking for in this process to accommodate the development, increase the maximum site area from 2 acres to 5.46 acres to accommodate the building, parking, and amenities, but yet the original number of units was 120. You're saying we did 120 units on 2 acres?
That, so under our development code, that is a new, new building type from 2015 Unified Development Code, so it's encouraging higher-density buildings and sites on a smaller footprint.
But we're going from a maximum of 2 acres up to 5.6. That sounds like less than.
Correct, so it's actually lower density than what they could build on there. They could, they could build 60 units on 2 acres if they wanted to.
Where did the original 2 acres come from, then? Maximum of 2.
That is, that is from our 2015 Unified Development Code.
That said, a, a PUD can only be 2 acres?
A maximum of 2 acres for this particular building type.
For this particular building?
We're still, we're still learning how to apply some of those building types.
We got lots of PUDs over 2 acres, right?
Pretty much all of them are over 2 acres. What we've, we've seen, we've had the same reduction, or the same increase of the maximum requested through Calamar Senior Living on Coronado, so that's probably something that long-term, we would want to look at increasing that maximum, or removing the maximum altogether on that, but that would be through a future code amendment.
Okay, so what you're saying, that is in our code, then?
That is in our code.
The, reduce the required bike parkings from 134 down to 20, and the thought on that was?
That, 134, I mean, that would be assuming that every resident there, every living unit would have a bike, which the, yeah.
Is that normally in our code? Yeah.
So, Councilman Fowler, I believe this is related to something that Councilman Levissay is interested in, and that is the adoption of the complete street policy, which has a tendency to, to specify more pedestrian walking or pedestrian biking requirements than what might be common sense required.
Okay.
And so, I believe the requirement to, or the agreement to reduce that is a response to that. Is that accurate?
Yes, and we've, and we've seen that same reduction requested multiple times. The original, the Price Chopper made that same request, and we put some caps on how many bike spaces we could require on commercial, but we have not applied that yet to residential, and that's probably something we'll also want to look at in the future.
I just look at those original, 2 acres, 120 units, 134 bike spaces, and 197 parking spaces, that just, I don't know how we ever came up with those requirements.
It doesn't, it doesn't fit on 2 acres.
No.
No, you indicated, wait, you know, you indicated that maybe the average age is in the 80s?
Correct, and the applicant maybe will answer a little bit more about that.
Yeah, that's why I think they won't be riding bikes, they'd probably be out walking.
Which is why we're supporting the reduction.
Then I had a question for Tom, and this, I realize you may have to come up and, or may have to refer this over to the bond counsel. Will these, I think 23 million in bond, that's, the city is doing that, and will that go against our bond rating, or will any, in future bond issues that we, if we may want to go out on, would that be a line item in there, and if, if the developer would not pay that back, is the city at risk and would have to pay that back?
I'll defer that to Sid Douglas, our bond counsel.
Okay.
Okay, Sid, you still need to be.
Sid Douglas with Gilmore &amp; Bell, 2405 Grand Boulevard, Kansas City, Missouri. I'm sorry.
Do you want to swear in the testimony about giving this case?
Yes. Continue, Sid. The, the bonds that will be issued are being purchased by the developer. The city is not putting its credit behind repayment of the bonds in any way, shape, or form. They're being issued as accommodation to provide the tax abatement, and that's the city's sole role in the issuance of the bonds and entering into the transactions. The lease agreement with the company that is building the facility will provide indemnification to the city for anything that may go wrong there, and it's expected, even though this is a special purpose in any, they're expecting that approximately 3% of the value of the project will be in net worth, equity they'll be putting in the project, so there will be assets that the city would have recourse to, to regain or enforce the indemnification.
Okay, but you said 3% of the project?
30%.
Oh, 30%, okay, all right, that helps, yep. Thank you. That's my question.
Anyone else before we move to the developer? Okay, thank you, Steph. Does the developer like to come up and be sworn in?
Rich Wood from the Pulsonelli Law Firm, 900 West 48th Street, our place, Kansas City, Missouri.
Do you want to swear in the testimony about giving this case?
I do.
Tom, you have a clicker?
I did, just give me a nod and all.
Just give me a nod, okay. Nod. Again, my name is Rich Wood from the Pulsonelli Law Firm. I have with me tonight Chris Hafner from David Architecture and Engineering, and also Jeff Berg from Colliers International. I'm going to let Chris here in a minute give kind of an overview of the site plan, and walk through the rationale behind a couple of the modification requests. Then Jeff is going to get up and get, share his vision of this project, and I think Council Member Fowler, he'll address several of your questions, and, and the operation of the facility, and his vision for, for how it's run. Let me first orient you to the property, then I'll turn it over to Chris to talk about the site plan. The address is 821 Southwest 7 Highway. It's within the White Oak Marketplace Tiff development area, which was mentioned, just west of Price Chopper, approximately five and a half acres, currently zoned, general business, and it's currently vacant, as you can see on the, on the overhead. And I think with that, Chris, you want to give a overview of the site plan?
Good evening, I'll swear in. Do you want to swear in the testimony about giving this case? I do. Good evening, Chris Hafner with Davidson Architecture and Engineering, 4301 Indian Creek Parkway, Overland Park, 66207. Thank you for the time and the consideration this evening of this project. Luckily, I was here with the original White Oak development, and able to put in a great Price Chopper and all the other amenities on this site. So we're excited to be here again this evening to kind of finish out to the west this project here for Novel Place. Really, the concept being a senior living facility that utilizes existing infrastructure and amenities to really create a sense of home and community for people that would use this facility with the Price Chopper restaurant use, everything else that we kind of have going at White Oak, to be able to benefit this project for close proximity and walkability. So we're very proud of the pedestrian connectivity with the crosswalks and the sidewalks around not only our site, but then obviously connections to Sunset, the rest of the development, out to Highway 7, as well as the road that we worked with staff closely on, that kind of heads south to Mullet Fall Creek, with sidewalk access there as well. Wanted to say I appreciate staff's commentary on the project, what we're producing here, hopefully with your approval this evening. So, 134 units, we're excited about the outdoor amenity spaces that happen within those kind of enclosed courtyards. We really envision one side to be a little bit more active, and other side to be a little more tranquil, all kind of connected through a central dining space and really hub of Novel Place in the middle of that building that would have French doors and access and a lot of light out to both sides of the project. We're excited, too, about the orientation. We've got a lot of good east and west sunlight for the users of Novel Place. We feel like that's a superior site orientation, and again, really meeting what the PUD called for back when I was doing this project, actually 2011, when I started it, of some sort of senior use on this site to kind of take advantage of this. So, I know other people have come forward with other plans in the past, but we're excited about this one, and I'm happy to answer any questions about Novel Place. To get into some of the modification requests, I think really most of those are just code-related, and how does this building fit to that? We do have an exhibit to show you about the reduction of parking. Again, important to note, the parking could be accommodated, but we have done other senior living facilities. This exhibit kind of shows the dark green area on the north and south are simply going to be landscaped for now, with the ability to do future parking that would meet ordinance, but from our experience in the senior living communities, that parking is, it's set up for a different user, a younger user that might have one or two cars per unit, and here we just don't see that. So, the covered parking is important to these users, and access to some of those amenities is important, more so than being able to have a car, especially with the transportation that will be providing here with Novel Place. So I'm happy to answer any questions, again aesthetically or design-wise about the project or these modifications.
Okay, I was going to say, on that photo right there, on the south portion of it, there is a access provided to the Mullet Fall Creek to the south, and that, maybe it's just the overlay of the color there, but it looks like it cuts into that.
Absolutely correct, but that, that road is in, and that access doesn't intend to stay, yes.
And then, it's not in the 5.46 acres, but, and this is Phase 2, this is what Phase 2 was supposed to be, was the living facility. I, for some reason, thought Phase 2 was going to go all the way north to Sunset. This is not, so can you, is that part of the developer's land, and it's going to remain general business?
It will remain with the original developer, yes. We, our client is not purchasing that north section. That frontage was deemed valuable for Sunset Plaza frontage, and there could be a time where something happens there, but it is not envisioned as part of this current plan with Novel Place.
So it still remains retail, or general business at this time?
Correct.
Okay, all right, all right. That's my questions, yeah.
Councilman Kayler?
So, was the original concept plan, was it a three-story also, was prior to my time being here?
Of course. You know, we really didn't do elevations of that section of the PUD, just because we really knew what Price Chopper was going to look like and the associated retail next to it. It was always just in site plan form that showed kind of what they call a CCR, Continuation of Care, where senior and assisted and independent would all be, and skilled nursing would all be part of one larger facility. So this is just really breaking away from that use and going to a single use, larger size for that single use, but breaking away from the CCR model.
I guess I'm a little confused here, maybe, Tim Fowler might be able to fill me in here. The section of the land there up there at Sunset, was that not originally in the original concept?
For some reason, I thought the residential went all the way north to that, but maybe it's wrong.
And then my question is, where do we come up with 2 acres now to 5 acres, and we're taking out that section? I, I'm having trouble following that.
Understood. The original PUD did basically take the seven acres west of Price Chopper and say, this is some senior project. We didn't know at the time in 2011 what it would be. Like I said, multiple other developers have looked at this and tried different continuation of care options on the site, so yes, that whole seven acres was planned as some sort of residential, whatever the case may be. Our project in particular just focuses on this southern portion, and leaves the Sunset Boulevard, or Sunset Drive frontage available for some other future development. Related to the 2 acres, again, that's just a code, what's in the code and what's allowed, and this site is larger than the code allows for the zoning designation.
Okay. Thank you.
It was mentioned that we do not require in the codes a number for age, minimum age being in the project. Is there any assurance, and is that number, minimum number 55, 60, 65? Or we're leaving that to chance, saying that that's a senior living facility, and if census goes down, we start letting younger people in there that have children, maybe, which is going to be a burden on the school district? So I guess I'm looking for some assurance that this indeed will be a senior project, age-restricted.
Okay, you can, you'll, you'll address that when you come up. Okay.
Anybody down here?
If, if I may, if, if my memory serves me correctly, when you made your presentation back on the first deal, part of that presentation was that it was going to be part of that presentation was that it was gonna be a mixed-use development. 65% would be HUD-rated, 35% would be market-rated, and it would have an age restriction of 55 and above. That's what I remember from the presentation that you presented. And you just stated that that's, you weren't sure what was going on. I don't know, it just seemed like you're conflicting for what you originally presented to us back when the first development. And when we were doing all the talking about what was going in and how it was going in, and now it seems like, well, no, that's not what we meant. We were not sure what we're doing. It was gonna be some sort of senior living. I don't know, I'm getting mixed signals from you from what originally I thought we heard and was presented to us to what you're presenting now.
I don't recall throwing up percentages for sure when this project went through. What I will say is I draw master plans all the time. And I didn't have a user for this part of the site. I don't have a user along Sunset Boulevard, but we created a plan that showed what could potentially happen in those locations. So now, we're at a point where we do know what's happening here. This is the plan going forward, which very closely aligns to the original PUD. Maybe not in percentages of continuum of care and age groups, but certainly a mix of use on the site, which was the original intention of this PUD.
Yeah, my concern on this is, we have cases where something comes in and they present a really nice plan and it looks really nice and it sounds really good. And then years pass and now we're settling for something that's not as good, more dense. We're giving up parking spaces and bike spaces. It sounds like to me that we're giving up bike spaces so we can have parking spaces, but we want less parking spaces. So it seems like we're settling for less than what we could get.
I would respectfully disagree with that comment. This is a great-looking project. It's a top-end senior living facility that we're putting in this location. Again, I think the Price Chopper, granted, I designed it. I think it looks great. I think it does well. I think the outlot buildings continue that architecture. I think we're doing the same thing here with connectivity and with the design and with the use. It makes all the sense in the world to have these things put together. So while it's not a center that has skilled nursing or assisted living, we feel like this is going to be a much more active use, still using the shopping center as a whole and making this whole area a lot more vibrant.
I heard you say...
I mean, council member.
I heard you say a few minutes ago, skilled care or skilled nursing, and now you're saying no skilled nursing. Can you clarify, please?
The original PUD had multiple linked buildings on the site, again, as a concept. That had skilled nursing, assisted living, and senior, all connected. This project is senior on a larger scale. Those were in smaller buildings.
But it's all independent living?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, one more question.
Councilman Fowler?
It's kind of an extension of Councilman Edmondson's, Councilmember Edmondson. So the original, go back to 2014, yeah, the senior living component was there. I think I heard the strategy of, hey, having senior living next to, you know, something like a Price Chopper, that could be really good economically for something like a Price Chopper. And so I see you honoring that original vision. A lot of the time has went by, and that has always seemed like good retail area. Was there ever any thought of going to retail? Or is this, your convictions are just as strong today as they were originally?
I will tell you, again, I draw a lot of master plans all over the metro. This part of the site is way too far off of 7th Highway from a retailer's standpoint. Anything that could go back there, a big box, whatever else the case may be, they're not being built. Just, and Mr. Berg can speak to this more, from a retail market standpoint, the Price Chopper didn't want to go back there. They had all 20 acres, right? They could've put that building wherever they wanted and created a bunch of pad sites out in front. Their main goal was visibility. I think you recall, we did a lot of site studies from 40 and 7 of how you could see Price Chopper to counteract their competitor there and move literally across the street. There was a lot of discussion about the orientation of the building. Those were all very, very cognizant decisions of the design of White Oak. First and foremost, to make sure Price Chopper had the right location, have that parking lot go from a ski slope to what it is now, which is nice and traversable by everybody. This retail doesn't happen that far back. And that's honestly why the old shopping center, if you can remember it, being that L shape, it was too far off of the highway frontage to make any difference.
Okay, that's consistent with your original plans, sir?
Yep.
Okay, unless there's other questions from the council, we will bring the third person up.
Thank you for the time.
And if you come up, be sworn in.
I do, thank you. My name's Jeff Berg. I'm representing Novel Place, I'll see as one of the developers, 4520 Main Street, Kansas City, Missouri, 64111. Thank you very mu, very pleased to be here with you tonight, mayor and councilpeople. We're really, this is one of my favorite subjects to speak about because we're really proud of the facility that we're creating. And we're proud to be here in Blue Springs. Our reception here has been great, starting with our market study and people that we're talking with in the community. We think that our residents will be well-received. You can see some elevations and pictures out here. Let me back up and tell you what we're creating here. This is an independent living facility. As previously stated, our average age is approximately 83. This is based on projects we've completed to date in Mission, Kansas, and that we've been involved with elsewhere in the Kansas City metro. The goal for the facility, it is reasonably priced. This is not high-end luxury. It's not subsidized low-end either. This is a, just a nice, middle-class facility that you get a lot more than you think you would get for the price. Our units, our apartment, our residences started about $1,800 per month. What you get with that includes two meals, includes transportation, which we alluded to before, but both through a kind of a mini bus and a van. We have a concierge as part of the residence that helps coordinate with our residents. They can get home healthcare. We don't provide it, but we rent it out. We rent a facility within the residence that the, our guests can contact, can contract for home healthcare as they age in place, they don't have to leave. We can provide rides to shopping or doctors or things like that. We provide women's service and housekeeping, all card. So we really are looking at a hospitality model. If you walked into this building, you might think you're in a pretty nice hotel. Again, it's not gonna be the Ritz-Carlton, and it's not gonna be the Four Seasons, but it's maybe a really nice Hilton Garden Inn or Marriott Courtyard, a brand-new one that's up to date. It's, the design theme is kind of southern coastal. Chris can, coastal, coastal modern, coastal contemporary. It's light, it's breezy, it's not starkly modern, but it is really refreshing. And it's, it's a really nice place to live. Glad to answer any questions. Do you, I think we have some more slides. This was the unit, the project that I mentioned before in Mission, Kansas, that we built. It, we learned a lot from this. It turned out to be very successful, leased up very quickly. But through the process, we made plenty of mistakes. And we learned from those mistakes and corrected them with this unit. And everything we've learned has been incorporated into the new building, including more areas for social gatherings like bar, lounge, library, dining room, outdoor gathering spaces and things like that. We'll also have fitness, which is an important component for our residents. We'll have storage, hairstylist, movie theater, multipurpose room and other things they can use. And Rich, we'll cover that. But I'm glad to answer any questions.
If I may, while you're still here, let me ask you a few questions on this. I'm familiar with some properties similar to this where it's kind of assisted-living-type setup. Are your plans to go into any more detailed care as residents get older? Because if you say your average age is 83, I would think that the term length before you started getting into being more needy, that's probably not the right word to use, but that's what I come to my head, would happen fairly shortly. So is, is that in the leasing? That when you get to a point where you can't take care of yourself, that you need further assistance, that you have to leave? Or...
You do have to leave when you need further assistance. We can help, again, with the Home Healthcare Agency that is located inside. We, as the owners, cannot provide those medical services. We are not licensed to do that. But we can help facilitate the residents obtaining those services so they can age in place in their own resident unit. But when, there comes a time when they're not able to take care of themselves, even with the assistance of home healthcare. And at that time, we work with them to find new. I would also, I think it kind of got lost in the shuffle, the age restriction parts of things. There's two ways that you can be assured this is not gonna turn into an apartment complex for young people with kids. One is, we have a private agreement that, with the developer of the rest of the shopping center, that is recorded. It will be recorded at, filed for record, that does restrict this to senior living. But in the market reality also, if you're a young person or with kids, you're not gonna wanna pay $1,900 a month to get your meals provided and your transportation provided. It's just not an attractive setting for that. So we have both the private land use control that governs that and the market reality of it.
Okay.
Covering that.
Anyone else? Okay, we'd like to enter this presentation as Exhibit 2. All right. Are there any other questions of the developer? If not, we're gonna go to the public. Going to the public, is there anyone that wants to speak in support of? In support of? Opposition, too? Opposition, too? We're closing this public hearing. We'll go to the first bill, Bill Number 4655, rezoning the property at Novel Place at White Oak Marketplace. We would like to introduce it.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor. First reading of Bill Number 4655, an ordinance rezoning property from general business planned unit development to high-density multifamily planned unit development.
Will the bill be approved on its first reading and perceived as the second?
Is there a second?
Second.
In their discussion. Councilman Levise.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for public record, I had sent an email to the entire council to expressing some concerns on this, so just so that's a matter of public record. But I've had some difficulty with this from the very beginning with the PUD concept plan as just being the generic senior housing. I think this is the center of the city at 7 and 40. And as often as they'll tell me that this is not appropriate for retail or whatever, we have, over the last five years, they've attempted to put some sort of senior facility here and it hasn't come to fruition. But what has happened at 7 and 40, especially since the redevelopment, is we've had additional redevelopment on Sunset Plaza. We have the Slotskis under construction. We've had Sandy's moved to the Moll Fall Creek. We've had some interest from the theater from expanding there. We, for a while, they were attracted for their own reasons. We had Zaxby's interested in going to the old Golden Corral. So I think we've seen a lot of activity of retail and restaurants and entertainment in this area. And now, as was mentioned by one of the speakers, there's connectivity from 40 Highway through Sunset Plaza, through White Oak, all the way to Moll Fall Creek. And so there is just the perfect scenario of some sort of retail or entertainment or restaurant to go in this facility. And I think we're being short-sighted by allowing the senior facility. In addition to that, since the first one here is the rezoning, it's not an all-inclusive, but I looked over all of the zoning map in the city of Blue Springs. Most of our multifamily, our apartments are MF14. I think there was only one or two areas, like Brookwood Village out there by Walmart, that was more dense than MF14. So this will be among the most dense in the entire city. And we're putting it smack dab in the middle. And I think a lot of the staff discussion was that this is mixed-use and it falls within a comprehensive plan. But I think the vision of the comprehensive plan, when talking about mixed-use, was like what we've talked about downtown, which some sort of retail underneath and living above it. Some sort of mixed-use projects as a whole, not a mixed-use site that has some apartments and some retail. I think it was more of a mixed-use facility. So I don't think this falls in line with the comprehensive plan. I don't think this is an appropriate use for this property in the middle of the city. And I'm gonna have some difficulty doing, supporting anything besides allowing some opportunity for those things to happen on the site. So I would appreciate any additional comments.
Anyone else? Councilman Fowler?
I'm interested also in the second, council member from that district as well.
I'd be happy to respond if you want me to. Councilman Levise and I do think alike on this. And on that first presentation, I do remember speaking out on the fact that you said that it was a second-tier, didn't have an opportunity to really develop in that area. And since that meeting, we've had a quick trip go in on the corner. We have a storage facility that's going in on 7 and 40 Highway. We're looking at a new car wash coming in and taking out the old Ponderosa for redevelopment there. Also, I believe they're talking about maybe an oil change facility or something over where Clark Tool is. So there's a whole lot of redevelopment going in. I will say that for us, the Price Chopper was the pivoting point, I think, to really spur that. I think Hy-Vee started out with it, got it going. Price Chopper making a move across the way. Orsland's moved in and the Price Chopper's location. As Chris mentioned, Sandy's is going at the Moll Fall Creek. That sits that far back. We've had a very successful entertainment business, SidePockets in that facility, that's been going well all these years and done really well that distance back. My concern is that we are losing probably one of the biggest retail options that, or opportunities that we could have within that corridor. There's really no other space of that size to be able to develop anything in there. My also concern is that we're going to more density. If you're frequent that area, Price Chopper parking lot is packed all the time. Johnny's Tavern, first watch. I mean, you can't hardly find a parking space that's within. So you'd have to create walkable distances because people are parking there. I just don't think this is the best use for the facility.
Now, as mayor, I represent all three districts. So I'm gonna give you my take on it. When we passed this, it was the intent, because Price Chopper took a big chance moving across the street to this new area, that there would be a housing component to it. A housing component with senior citizens who could support not only Price Chopper, but all the other pad sites that we're gonna go in. And I think we're doing a disservice if we try to alter that and try to put retail in an area where I doubt seriously any retail is gonna go. I haven't seen any retail wanna go way off of site behind Price Chopper. If you notice Johnny's Tavern and all the pad sites going in, it's going as close to 7th Highway as they possibly can. They're not going back in the back 40. So I think that we made a commitment that there'd be a housing component with this project and it would be for senior citizens who would utilize that whole development site. And I think we'd be doing a disservice if we didn't continue and make that happen. So, but being said, unless there are other comments?
Yeah, Your Honor, let me just talk just a second to this. I wanna say that with two members in a district opposing something, if that's where we're at, it's very difficult for me as a council member to, for the rest of the council to override them on that. But, and honestly, I think that it would be great to see retail and the cash registers going over there. They make great points. At the same time, it's well-documented that for the past four to five years, the applicant has been consistent as wanting this as residential. And our city attorney showed me there is ordinance in there. And we put it in the ordinance that this would be residential, all the conditions that have been out there for the past five years. years. And I took an oath to enforce the ordinances of the city of Blue Springs. So in that aspect, I have to go with what's in writing in the ordinance. But I appreciate our fellow council members that this is their district, and I understand that I'll be overriding that.
I just want to speak to that for a second, because it's a pretty common standard that a previous council cannot bind a future council. And I'm guessing the reason why it wasn't zoned dense back then is just for this reason, because on the other side of what you're talking about, that means for the past five years, they've consistently tried to put a senior housing here and haven't been able to do it. And so there shows some failure on that sense to do something along those lines. And so I don't know that saying, well, five years ago, this is what we said we were going to do, that that binds us to any particular decision now. I think that that is, it goes against general policy or how governments work. You're not really supposed to be allowed to do that.
I guess, but I also want to remind you that we've been, had a partnership in writing with this applicant and a TIF plan and incentive plan, and I don't know that I can walk away from that. So in our respect for what you're saying, I really do.
Well, I have some other comments, but I think you all have covered it, so.
Your Honor, could we hear from our city attorney on the agreement, please? Mayor and counsel?
I copied a portion of the TIF contract that this council approved on November 17th, 2014. So I'm just going to read from that contract. Says, "For the purposes of this contract, a change in the use of redevelopment project Area B," which is the subject property, "for commercial, retail, or office uses, or for residential uses that would not be age-restricted, shall require the approval of the city and any other approvals required for a substantial change under the Act." So it's calling that, if you want to change it to retail, commercial, that's a substantial change to the TIF plan.
Well, but this is not an age-restricted, I mean, it's age-restricted on the developer's part, but we're not requiring age restriction. So isn't that consistent then with the contract?
In my, I'll let the...
What's your legal opinion on it?
Economic development. I believe that's part of the contract. I think they are stating that it's age-restricted. Do you like to speak on that, Mr. Wood?
I would agree with that assessment. The age restriction doesn't necessarily have to come from the city. I mean, we're going to restrict the facility through our restrictive covenants with the master developer.
It is a recorded document that it is age-restricted. Also, I believe because of the failures of some of the previous senior livings, it's because they were not able to get a certificate of need through the state of Missouri. Ours does not require certificate of need. And one last point, and I understand the desire for retail. In my day job, that's all I do, is retail. I represent companies like Costco, Target, Dick's Bring Goods, PetSmart, a lot of the major boxes. I can promise you, I'm not saying this just because I want our senior living project to pass. It's too far off the road. Those retailers will not go back that far. You'll be waiting another 15, 20 years if you hold off for retail there.
Can I ask one more? I just want to clarify what our city attorney is saying. So if we do something besides an age-restricted senior living, what does it require for us to do that? A new contract?
A new contract, an amendment to the TIF plan, a new plan.
So it's something that can't be done?
It's a substantial change.
Right.
An ordinance change, correct?
Yeah, this is by ordinance. This contract was approved by ordinance.
So it's something that can't be amended, though?
I suppose so.
Okay. So we're not holding, there's nothing that says we have to vote for this. We just have to amend the TIF and amend the contract if we choose to do something else. So if you're basing your vote here tonight on a legal opinion, it's something that can't be amended. You're not bound by that, is what I'm saying.
That's a pretty tall order, but yes.
I mean, if I could just add to that, there are two components. You have your TIF plan. If there's a substantial change to that, that requires going back through the TIF process, TIF commission, back through the council. But there's also the TIF contract, which the city attorney is alluding to, and that requires the willing participation of the other party to that contract to amend it. So yes, you could change your ordinance approving that TIF contract, but unless the master developer on this project is willing to amend that TIF contract, that part's not going to get done.
Wouldn't a TIF benefit from having additional retail instead of residential?
But I think it made it clear, ain't no retail going back there.
Well, that's their opinion. I have a different opinion, so I mean, that's irrelevant.
I'm going to allow, I'm going to allow on the professionals.
Yeah, well, retail would be, the TIF would benefit from additional retail, would pay off quicker, would have raised more money for the project. So actually, we're doing a disservice to them as well by allowing residential, because they could have more opportunity there with a retail and more TIF.
But what I'm hearing is that the developer is not going to approve a change, and you have to have, that party has to be part of the agreement.
I feel like that's not as relevant as being made out to be.
I'm going to make one other comment, and then we're going to take a vote. You mentioned certificate of need, and once you start getting in the number of bids and all, and being a former state representative, I understand certificate of need, certainly. But there was another component to it back when we first started talking about senior living, because the initial plan was to try to get a tax credit from the state, and that never happened. Matter of fact, they're hard to come by. We've only had one recently in Blue Springs, that was Friendship Manor. And that took several years and a lot of effort to get that done. So I think that was kind of dropped, and that probably helped push you into going with independent living to where you weren't trying to get one of those tax credits from the state of Missouri. To refresh your memory.
Can I make a, excuse me, I'd like to make, if I can speak, I'd like to make a quick comment, being the new guy on the block. If I were to look at this project today with this in there, and it was all done, I would think it would look really good. If I were to look at this project with this senior facility coming by itself, I wouldn't like it. So I see this, because I haven't been privy to all these conversations in the study before, I see this as a finished unit, and I like what I see. I don't like spot rezoning, but to me, it just doesn't fit into that. So I see it, like I said, as a finished project.
Sir? Okay. You've heard the motion, you've had a second. First reading? No, this, he made the motion, this is the first reading. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no.
No.
Okay, so three ayes, four ayes? Who said?
I said aye.
Okay.
Was that two ayes down here?
I got two ayes here.
We can only count one of them.
All in favor, say aye, so ayes have it. Move to the second reading.
I thought I heard three.
Oh.
I voted aye.
All right, all right.
Second reading.
Four three.
Second reading of Bill Number 4655, an ordinance rezoning property from general business planned unit development to high-density multifamily planned unit development.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Levise?
No.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
No.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
No.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Motion carries with a four-three vote, given ordinance Number 4814.
Okay, well, move on to the next one. Introducing the bill, 4656.
Fowler, introduce you, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4656, an ordinance approving the amended planned unit development concept plan for Novel Place at White Oak Marketplace.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Same sign?
No.
Just one.
One no.
Two no's.
Two no.
You only got one no.
Right. But his no's two.
Okay, so is that five-two? Okay, five-two.
Second reading of Bill Number 4656, an ordinance approving the amended planned unit development concept plan for Novel Place at White Oak Market.
Move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmembers Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
No.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
No.
Levise?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Motion carries with a five-two vote, given ordinance Number 4815.
Last one on this particular issue is the industrial development plan. We would like to introduce it.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4657, an ordinance approving a plan for an industrial development project for the benefit of Novel Place Blue Springs LLC, authorizing the city to issue its taxable industrial revenue bonds in the maximum principal amount of $23 million and authorizing certain other actions in connection with issuance of the bonds.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Councilman Levise.
I had a quick question. Councilman Fowler, council member Fowler, covered the industrial bonds, but I had a question about the Chapter 100. You mentioned they're only using that for just sales tax purchases, and I think there was a number, my question is really has to do with the Fire District, because I know there was something recently where the Fire District only has to allow half of their sales tax or something like that. I just wanted to see if that was occurring here as well.
Absolutely. In this particular case, every taxing jurisdiction will get everything that they would normally get. They're strictly seeking the sales tax exemption on the construction, construction material purchases. So any real estate, there is no real estate tax abatement associated with this.
But wasn't the new, because the Fire District has a sales tax?
Right. They have, they have a minimum of providing only a 25% abatement.
Okay, is that happening here as well?
In sales tax, I don't believe that that is applicable.
Okay, it's just, that's just property taxes.
It's strictly for real property taxes.
Okay, thank you, that's what I was on.
Okay. All in favor, aye? I mean, this is the first reading? We're on the second one. First reading? Okay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Polls, same sign?
No.
No.
Got two no's? Five ayes.
Second reading of Bill Number 4657, an ordinance approving a plan for an industrial development project for the benefit of Novel Place Blue Springs LLC, authorizing the city to issue its taxable industrial revenue bonds in the maximum principal amount of $23 million and authorizing certain other actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds.
Move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmembers Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
No.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
No.
Levise?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Motion carries with a five-two vote, given ordinance Number 4816.
Okay, we'll move on to the next public hearing, which is the rezoned property at 3200 Northwest Jefferson Street.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibits to enter into the record. Council information form with attachments, staff report, location maps, affidavit of publication in the Examiner on April 6, 2019, application with attachments, 185-foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of sight, copy of letters sent to said property owners, title for land use section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference, and Bill Number 4658 approving the rezoning. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Okay. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city councils. This is a request this evening to rezone approximately three acres of property from general business or GB to regional commercial or RC zoning. The site is located Northwest Jefferson Street, near the intersection of I-70 and Woodschapel Road. It is highlighted here in the black and white dash line. Blue Springs Marine Business, but for boat sales and service and marine vessels currently occupies the site. In 1997, a little history here, conditional use permit was approved to allow Blue Springs Chrysler Jeep and Dodge to operate on that site as vehicle sales and service. And they conducted that use on that property for a number of years. In 2000, the city council, through a Unified Development Code amendment, or a city code amendment, altered the use table and changed the zoning districts in which a vehicle sales and service use would be allowed with approval of conditional use permit. And so previously, a vehicle sales service type use was allowed in the general business zone with approval of a conditional use permit. After the year 2000, with that code update, those types of uses were only allowed in the regional commercial zoning district with approval of a conditional use permit. So in essence, for the past 19 years or so, Blue Springs Marine has been operating kind of in a grandfathered or legal non-conforming state in which their use was approved, and then the zoning changed on them, and in that case, they're allowed to continue that use without making any major modifications or expansions to that use until such time that they need to rezone the property to bring it into conformance with the code. That is the genesis of tonight's request. They are, as a separate project, proposing to do an addition or a new building on the lot adjacent to it that is currently zoned regional commercial. And in working with city staff and throughout the development process of that, we suggested that they bring this current property that is zoned general business and propose to rezone that to regional commercial to bring that into conformance with today's code based upon that 2000 code amendment. So that is the request this evening. The conditional use permit that was approved back in 1997 for the vehicle sales and service would still be applicable today. So if this were to be approved, the conditional use permit would be in place, and this would just be bringing it more into conformance with the code. So as I mentioned, they are planning to utilize the property immediately adjacent to the east for an expansion of their business. They will be kind of operated separately, that's two independent parcels, but they will be under one ownership, or not one ownership, but one kind of cohesive, you know, back-and-forth type use, but they will have separate ownerships. But again, this is trying to bring that zoning into conformance with the current code. As such, staff reviewed the request based upon the rezoning criteria outlined in the UDC, and staff believes that it does meet those code criteria. Those code criteria are that the rezoning request is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. Staff believes that it meets this criteria, as the comprehensive plan designates this property as corridor reinvestment, and we believe that this rezoning is in conformance with that designation. Second is that the rezoning request would further the intent of the regional commercial zoning district. The regional commercial zoning district is intended to provide for higher-intensity commercial uses along major primary corridors and interstates in the city. And as you can see in the map here, there is quite a bit of regional commercial zoning along the I-70 corridor, and we believe that this rezoning request is in keeping with the intent of having regional commercially zoned land along I-70. Third criteria is that the RC zoning is consistent with the character of the adjacent zoning districts, which we believe it is, as evidenced by the map, that the rezoning will not have any effect on the ability of the city or other government services to provide, or government jurisdictions to provide services to this site, such as fire, medical, water, sewer, things of that nature. And we don't believe that this rezoning request negatively impacts that ability. Sixth criteria is that the rezoning will not reduce the property values or the ability of adjacent properties to develop in conformance with the comprehensive plan. There's a number of existing businesses and proposed developments in that area, such as the StoreTropolis Development, that is another property over to the east. And so we believe that this rezoning is in keeping with the intent of the RC zoning and therefore will not have any negative impacts on adjacent property values or their ability to be developed in accordance with adopted plans or the adopted Unified Development Code. The number seven criteria is that there's a change in condition since the existing zoning and that warrants the change in zoning at this time. We believe that there has been a change in condition, and that change being that the code was amended to make this use only allowed by conditional use permit in the RC zone. And so therefore, that, since that has happened, they are 19 years later bringing it into compliance as much as possible with the current code. Staff believes that this rezoning request is consistent with all of the adopted plans and policies of the city, and therefore, staff recommends approval of the rezoning request. The Planning Commission on April 22 voted unanimously to recommend approval of the rezoning request, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions, Mike? Councilman Levise?
I just want to just kind of get to the point on it, that this, A, brings it more into compliance with our code.
Yes.
And then, don't they, if they're going to make any significant changes to a property, it has to come into compliance with code, isn't that correct? They lose their grandfather status if you want to make changes to the property?
To a certain extent, yes. They're allowed, within a certain threshold, allowed to, you know, make minor facade changes, changes to some of the parking lot, but, you know, once they hit a certain percentage, yes, then they need to bring it into compliance.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none?
The applicant is here, or a representative of the applicant is here to answer any questions or to, if the council has any as well.
You say the applicant is, okay, won't you come up and be sworn in if any comments you'd like to make?
Just wondering about getting this case approved.
I do. Alan Johnson, Alan Johnson Design, 700 West 47th, Kent City, Missouri, 64112. We are in support of the staff recommendations for rezoning in order to bring the site more into compliance with the updated codes, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Seeing none? Okay, that was quick, thank you. Okay, we're going to go to the public. Do you want to know what it's like to speak in support of? Support of? Opposition to? Opposition to? Close this public hearing. Who would like to introduce Bill 4658?
I'll introduce it, Your Honor. First reading of Bill Number 4658, an ordinance rezoning property from general business to regional commercial.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Second.
Second?
Okay.
All in favor of aye? Full same sign? Motion carries.
Second reading of Bill Number 4658, an ordinance rezoning property from general business to regional commercial.
Move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmembers Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levesque?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously and given ordinance Number 4817.
That brings us to the last public hearing for the amendment to the amended plan unit, planned development concept plan for Edgewater at Chapman Farms.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibits to enter into the record. Council information form with attachments, staff report, location maps, affidavit of publication in the examiner on April 6, 2019, application with attachments, 185-foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of site, copy of letters sent to said property owners, title for land use section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference, and Bill Number 4659 approving the amended PUD concept plan. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Thank you. Matt?
All right, thank you, Mayor and council. Before you this evening is a request for an amended PUD concept plan for Edgewater at Chapman Farms, which is located west of Southwest 7th Highway, both north and south of Southwest Green Meadow Drive. The PUD concept plan for development was approved by the city council on March 4. The purpose of the request this evening is to make changes to the architectural design of the proposed houses. No other aspects of the PUD concept plan is being amended as part of the request. The applicant is requesting to amend Condition Number 10, approved as part of the PUD concept plan, which does require that all front elevations of each single-family house shall include masonry and that additional design elements, such as shutters, shall be provided on some front elevations. The applicant is requesting a modification to that condition to allow flexibility in the building architecture requirements, so that not all houses have to have masonry. In the original PUD concept plan, staff report, staff did recommend several enhancements. Those are shown there on the screen, A, B, and C, that were more restrictive than what was actually made a condition. Staff believe that those recommendations, those enhancements of the houses would offset the reductions in lot sizes and increases in density, as well as provide greater diversity in the building design to enhance the streetscape and increase the long-term viability of the neighborhood. The staff recommendations in the staff, in the staff report were more specific than the approved conditions required, that simply just required that all houses have masonry on the front and that additional design elements be provided on some of the front elevations. As part of the requested amendment, the applicant has provided revised elevations. Staff has reviewed the revised elevations that have been submitted. There are a total of 12 elevations that have been provided with, that include a mix of building materials, including stone, lap siding, and batten board siding. Additional design elements, as requested by staff, have been provided, which include shutters, brackets, lighting, and enhanced garage doors on a number of elevations, which staff does believe meets the intent of Condition Number 10. However, the requirement that all front elevations have masonry has not been met. With four elevations not having any masonry, those are the top four elevations on the screen. The middle four elevations have a complete wrap around the garage door on the first level, and then the bottom four elevations have approximately three or four-foot base of stone along the, adjacent to the garage doors. Streetscape renderings have been provided that show generally with the revised color palette, as well as the different building materials of how those would generally lay out on the street. The streetscape elevations do provide greater diversity in the housing design coupled with the broader color palette than what was originally submitted. Staff does believe that these changes will provide more variation in building design and visual interest of both houses with and without masonry. Therefore, staff is supportive of reducing the requirement that all homes have masonry to only require that a majority of the homes have masonry. Staff also recommends that this condition only apply to the smaller lot homes that are north of Southwest Green Meadow Drive and not put any material requirements on the larger lots that are located to the south, which are the five building designs that are shown on the screen. Those house designs for those houses will remain as originally, as originally approved as part of the application. In reviewing the PUD concept plan review criteria, only criteria Number 1 is applicable to the architectural review, in which staff does believe that the intent of the PUD regulations are still met for the amendment by achieving a high-quality development with enhanced architecture and aesthetics. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing for the amended PUD concept plan on April 22. At that time, no one did speak, no one from the public spoke in favor or in opposition to the request. Ultimately, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the change to Condition Number 10 by a vote of eight to two. The commission also approved a PUD final plan with the architectural changes. That PUD final plan approval did include a condition that the final plan is subject to any changes or conditions added by the city council as part of the amended plan, development concept plan, or if the concept plan is denied by council, the original architectural design requirements must still be met by the applicant. Staff does recommend approval of the amended PUD concept plan with three conditions, and I will stand for any questions.
Any questions, Matt? Councilman Fowler?
Yes, Your Honor. Currently, 173 lots, or the requirement is, there's 173 lots in here, and all 173 lots have to have stone or masonry.
That's correct.
What is the number of homes, lots that will require stone or masonry going forward?
With the 50% if approved, that would be...
So it's, you're saying 50% is the approved?
Yeah, so 50, well, so we would subtract out, I believe there's 23 lots on the south side, does that sound right? So we would subtract out that, so there'd be about 150 lots, so 75 homes on the north side approximately would have to have masonry.
Say that number again.
About approximately 75 houses.
75, okay.
And the applicant is here. Again, they show two-thirds of the homes, two-thirds of the proposed elevations have masonry. We kept it at a 50, at least a majority have to have them. So, I mean, they may have, a greater number than 50% may have masonry, but to leave that flexibility for the applicant to make that determination.
Okay. Yeah, I do have some information I'd like to make sure is in the public record. I looked back through some of the packets, I saw an Olson letter written in early February before the Planning Commission, and it acknowledged that that, there was a requirement, a recommendation from staff to add masonry to the front elevations with two-foot wraparound the sidewall of the garage, and Olson acknowledged that back in that letter to the, to the city. The Planning Commission heard that, and in their, their staff report, and also in the, what came to the, to the city council, staff believes that the reduction in lot sizes and increase in density should be offset by higher quality design and material that would normally be constructed outside of a PUD. However, the, the building designs lack masonry materials and limited architectural variation. And then, in highlighted letters to the, to everybody, you wrote, "To mitigate the visual impacts of smaller lot sizes with some setbacks, staff recommendation, recommends additional design elements and materials to diversify the building design." You say staff recommends the following. A, all garage doors shall have windows added for transparency at street level. So I'm, I'm not, that apparently didn't make it to the ordinance, I'm not seeing where that's a requirement still. And then, B, masonry or brick shall be added to the front garage elevation, 100% coverage of the facade covered by, not covered by the garage door, and wraparound two feet on both sides of the garage door, first floor elevations. So those are two requirements in bold lettering that staff was requiring. That, at least B, made it into the ordinance. Why is staff supporting something different now?
So we recommended, that, that was kind of a recommendation we put in of different items that we would like to see. We didn't want to make it that restrictive to completely limit any flexibility in building design for the applicant as they moved forward to the, to the final plan. If we would have seen, we, we worked with the applicant on multiple occasions and did make that request to have additional design elements, and by the time we got to the concept plan to take the Planning Commission, we did, we still did not have that. So that's why we put the condition. If we would have received more refined elevations like we have this evening, we would have recommended support of that, because we do see all of the different design elements that we wanted to see. Since we didn't have them.
The garage door windows are not there also, is that?
That was, that was something that we put out there as a potential, an idea of how to add some additional building enhancement, and they have provided that on, on some of the elevations, but they've also added additional building projections, the brackets, another, a number of other design elements to kind of offset that.
Okay. That's all I have, Your Honor. Councilman Kayler?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
I'm a council member. I get your opinion.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me understand. So now we want to go to half the houses with masonry, and how many of those, half of those quantity are going to be just a little three foot up on the side of the garage? So basically, we could be looking at all these houses that's going to have masonry with just, just a little four foot up the walls, is that correct?
That is correct. I mean, even if it has the three or four-foot-high masonry wall, that would still meet the intent of the condition.
So we give the setbacks and we give other things in, and now we're wanting to come back with the garage doors didn't get in there with the windows, and now we're wanting to take half of them, half of the quantity, which is somewhere to the neighborhood of 75 homes that will have masonry, and who knows how many of the 75 will get the full first floor masonry, is that correct? Am I understanding correctly?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Councilman Levesque?
I just want to clarify, based on the questions these two are asking. So there's 173 lots, and I, I heard you say, and I think Councilmember Kayler just said, that 75 homes will require masonry?
Yeah, 50% of the homes on the north side of Green Meadow.
Okay, so it's 50%, so that was my question, because 50% is a lot, is more than 75.
Yeah.
But it's 50% on the homes on the north side.
We're subtracting out the homes on the south side.
Not of the whole project.
Okay. Which are, those lots are comparable to the existing meadows where there wasn't any, any minimum masonry requirement. So we don't, staff doesn't believe that that should apply to those lots.
I was just confused, the 50% and then 75, it wasn't matching up.
Yeah, so approximately 150 homes on that north side.
Good morning. Good, thanks, Matt. Developer Jones, you'd like to come speak on behalf of your project?
Just wondering about getting this case approved.
Yes. Kyle Jones, 120 Southeast 30th Street, Lee's Home, Missouri, 64082. Mayor, council, thanks for allowing me up here to present Edgewater Chapman Farms that Matt has given you some information on. So trying to take some notes here on some of your questions, concerns. The garage doors were a discussion point with staff as far as an added feature. We do have, which you can see, bottom row, the white one there, the second from the left, that is one of the options that we would consider an upgraded door, so there, and maybe if you go back to the other front, it shows some of those better, some of the upgraded options. So the bottom row, the middle two on the bottom row would be an upgraded door. So we do have, not necessarily windows in the doors, but there are options to create some diversity on the front elevations with the different options for the garage door The number of homes with, with stone is that we're wanting to just be, to have the ability to, to have at least 50% or more. So we're not saying we're not going to do it on all of them. We want our buyers to have that ability to, to say, no, I don't necessarily want stone, I want to meet the price point of, say they want to be at 250, and the, requiring them to have stone would be at 255 or 260, whatever that number may be. So we want to be able to keep that as, as affordable as possible for our potential buyers. So similar to if you're buying a truck, you have your base model, mid, upper exclusive, or whatever you want to call it, we don't want to be able to provide those different options for our buyers. Did I hit all the concerns up to this point, or did someone's trying to take notes, I apologize?
So the masonry, we have a minimum requirement, but that will be determined by the buyer deciding what, what features they want on their home.
Per the elevations, what we're providing, the options for the buyers would be the, the wainscoting at the garage doors, or the wraparound the entire garage door, or the, or the option without, without any stone at all.
But you're going to meet that minimum requirement regardless of...
On the number, on the number of homes, yes. Yes.
Anyone else? Councilman?
Go ahead.
Then we'll go to the council member.
No, you, you put that in.
Okay, well, I have the same question, and I don't think I fully got the answer. So if the buyer makes the choice, are you going to pre-build enough houses to meet that minimum, or are we going to get through this and then you've got 50% of the houses that have guys, that are wanting a lower price point, have bought the base model, that means you're forced into doing brick and everything else on the rest of it? Is that correct?
Make sure that we maintain that, make sure we maintain most of the lots to have masonry on there, yes. So we, on average, we're about two-thirds speculative build, so we'll be able to dictate the majority of the home, what happens, because most of our homes are done before they're sold, so we'll be able to dictate the, whether they have stone or not. But for the, that last third of our buyers that want to be able to choose everything from the ground up, then they have that option of choosing stone.
Okay, so that clarifies it a lot better, thank you.
Sorry.
No, 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 that's, that's kind of what I was asking, because I, if you let the buyer choose, they're going to go to the cheap option, which means you're not going to make the code, and then we're down the road with part of the house is built, and all of a sudden, we're coming back, you'll be coming back to us saying, hey, we can't make this, you gotta, you gotta give us a way to get out of this, and that's not how we should be doing this.
Sure.
We should be doing it, if you got quality, you say you're going to do quality, let's do the quality and not, not scape on the thing. So that's why I want to make sure.
And, and us as the developer and builder, we did put staff in a, in a spot where we, we gave them elevations, but we said, look, those aren't the finished product. And time went on and on and on, we, it took a while for architecture to arm it to get those renderings back to them. So once we were able to provide them more, a more better representation of what was going in there, that, that's how we're able to maneuver through some of these things and make sure everyone was on the same page. So it's not going to be an all brown community. We heard feedback from Planning Commission, so we've, our update, our updated palette is, is much more in line with what the current trends out there and everything, so. Councilman Kayler, you did mention about a little bit of stone. We have homes over in Villas at Chapman Farms, no stone. We build a lot of homes around the metro, no stone. So it's, even if there is a little, that's going to be more than some homes not even a mile away from, from where Edgewater would be. So it's not, at least for some of the homes, it's not abnormal to have a home with zero stone on, on the front of the home.
Well, I get that, you know, as you know, I, I was in construction for over 40 years. The thing I'm looking at is that, one thing was stated that we were going to have quality of homes and that masonry was going to be on it. And now we're coming back with 50%. We'll either have the full wraparound on the first, or we're coming up with a three or four foot on the sides of the garage. But then you just got through saying, but we are asking 50% of them, but one-third of the homes, you know, you have most of your houses built except one-third of it. So, now we could actually say one-third of the homes could not be.
No, we're not, we're not, we're staying, we're maintaining that we, the most of the homes will have masonry on them. We're not going to deviate from that. I was just saying that one-third of our homes are typically what our business model is, is two-thirds are speculative build. They're built before they're sold. And then one-third are build jobs where people start from the ground up. And so, that, of that one-third, those people would dictate what's on the front of the home versus on the other two-thirds Summit, as the builder dictates the selections on the, on the home.
And that's what I was getting at. Because on those, on those homes, you're dictating anyway. You could go ahead and dictate to have, have the masonry on those, two-thirds of those homes.
And we may be at that point if we don't, if we don't meet that threshold, and it gets to a point to where we identify that we need to do X number of homes to get above that 50%, then yes, we would be dictating that.
Okay. Councilman Edmondson. I'm a council member, Edmondson.
That's okay. In some aspects, I feel like I need a Snickers bar because it's, I, and I'm kind of going to hit up staff on this type of thing. But if we would get better information upfront of what's going to happen, we wouldn't have some of these questions we do. So, we had presentation review, and take it as you will. You show us something that's representation, we look at, and we make a decision off what we get. But then staff talks, you talk, they get it a little bit fine down, they, you know, sift it down to come out where you want to be. But we made our decision off what originally happened. And so, that's why you get these questions, why we get these concerns, is it comes back and now we're looking at this, and we've already thought, oh, we're going to get that. But no, now it's going to be more like this. So, if we could get more information or at least be more informed on the process, maybe, maybe we won't run down this, this issue that I know we're looking at now. Again, I, I don't have a problem with what you're doing. I think it's fine. I know you guys put out a good product. You go around and look all over town, you can tell that. But it just, how it's presented sometimes leads us to these things where we have doubt. Again, I'm in a grouchy mood, I guess.
Mr. Johnson, you have, did you ever come in?
I'm not grouchy. There's always process, council member. And if there are ways that we can improve this, I will say, from the very beginning of this, because starting with this being a land bank property, trying to comply with land bank policies and trying to give council members more information about, well, what do we have? What are we working with? What's going to be the end product? With our ultimate goal of getting these properties back on the tax rolls, but having it being a quality development, I will remind you that the staff's original proposal was masonry. This is not staff's request. This is the applicant's request to make this change. And so, the applicant has to make their case tonight for why they need this. And if we, as Matt had indicated, if we had had the defined elevations that they have presented tonight, we would have probably been in a position, had they requested to have the reduced masonry, we probably would have supported that, bringing that request forward. So, I hear you. And we'll, we will work to bring you better information, more refined and accurate, so that you don't have to go down this rabbit hole. I just have, Kyle kind of mentioned it. I'm just glad their houses aren't all brown. And if you drive by Eagles Ridge on 7th Highway, I think there's one blue house amongst all of the brown. So, it's like, it's a Skittles neighborhood.
Yeah.
I hear you, Mr. Edmondson.
Thank you.
I need a Skittle for some energy here tonight. Okay. Anyone, Councilman Lavey?
Just real quick, Your Honor. Kyle Jones, I appreciate all you do for Blue Springs. This is not your only project. You do a lot in town. Appreciate all you do in Summit Homes. This probably is a great example of why we have an amendment process. I guess where my, where I'm concerned at, it, for a number of weeks, you know, there was discussions about the trade-offs. In other words, the lot size has gone from 7, 7,200 square feet down to 4,500. That was a 36% reduction. Whis gone from 65 feet down to 38, a 41% reduction. Setbacks between the size of the houses are really down to where we're having to wonder about two air conditions and two lawnmowers, where they fit, fit and everything like that. And then staff links these, for many weeks, they link the trade-offs of those things that I just mentioned with the stone and masonry. And it went through the process like that without the developer ever saying, wait, wait, timeout, I really don't want this 100%. And so, I guess, since it was part of the trade-off, are you willing to trade anything back now to get this reduced requirement on masonry?
Could you give me an example of a trade-off?
The whis going from 65 feet to 55 feet instead of 38.
So, you'd want them up to 55 or 65 feet?
Well, I'm just saying that, hey, let's go back to the whis. Because all these things that were, all these trade-offs that we talked about are all the changes
Sure.
to our normal standards, were getting reduced quite a bit. And, and so, only thing staff did is say, hey, let's go with some brick or masonry. I'm not saying that was the right negotiation for our city to do. Maybe, maybe it wasn't, but yet, that's what's in there now.
At this point, I, we're trying to meet that price point, that two and a quarter, 225,000, 275,000. And we needed to get that lot width down to that, to make that work, to make the numbers pencil out, work for the project, for the site. The building products, I don't, I feel like they're as good as what anyone else puts out there. So, I don't, I don't know that we want, would want to do anything less than what we've proposed out there. I don't think we're in a position to, to go the other direction on some of those negoti, on some of those, those items that you brought up.
Okay.
So, I, I see, I do see your point. And staff, staff understood we're, you know, we're trying to, we, we were part of that chat study, chat review. And so, they identified, I mean, it was kind of a timing deal to where we, we participated in that, and then Edgewater came, came on board kind of at the same time, like, well, light bulb goes on and try, we decided to be a prime opportunity to try to make it, make it work for that product, for this product.
Okay. I don't have to go to attorney to indicate that we are not here to negotiate, that we're here to vote up or down.
Only, only that one amendment is before the council tonight, the architectural amendment.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Jones? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in support of? Support of? My opposition to?
My opposition to? Close this public hearing. Who would like to introduce it?
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4659, an ordinance approving an amendment to the planned unit development concept plan for Edgewater at Chapman Farms.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
The second.
Second.
Discussion.
Councilman Lavey. Yes, Your Honor. I appreciate the public hearing, and that's, this is why we have a process. And I acknowledge that we're not here to negotiate, that we're here to, to vote up or down. I think that my personal, I'm linked to the trade-off that staff originally went with, that put in our notes, that was out there for many, many weeks. I'm going to honor that. That's what's written in the ordinance. And again, I took an oath to enforce the ordinances, so I'm with the original plan.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, all in favor, aye? Aye. Close, no?
No.
No.
Let's go ahead. And I think this, I think it's pretty much no on the first reading. Was it 6-1?
I'm a no.
I'm a no.
No?
No.
Okay.
One aye. Sorry about that.
Okay. 6-1.
Motion fails.
Okay, it fails. We'll move on to the next item. And thank you for sticking with us on the public hearings tonight. We kept you a little bit longer than we normally keep you. And hopefully, you'll be able to get home before the storm comes. Okay. And we're going to get out of here before the storm comes too, because we're coming down to the end. Introduction, reading of Bill 4660.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor. First reading of Bill Number 4660, an ordinance amending Sections 105, 110, 115, 125, and various gender-specific sections of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, to bring said chapters into compliance with voter-approved charter amendments.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
The second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Same sign.
Second reading of Bill Number 4660, an ordinance amending Sections 105, 110, 115, 125, and various gender-specific sections of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, to bring said chapters into compliance with voter-approved charter amendments.
Move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
The second.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Kayler?
Aye.
Lavey?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Cole Pepper?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4818.
Next, we have an introduction of Bill 4661.
I'll introduce, Your Honor. First reading of Bill Number 4661, an ordinance terminating tax increment financing within the Fall Creek redevelopment area, dissolving the special allocation fund related thereto, and authorizing certain actions relating thereto.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
The second.
Second.
Discussion. Councilman Lavey.
Your Honor, maybe it's the word terminating that's tax increment financing that's getting me. I guess I want to, I want to hope that this is the ending of this TIF, and that the TIF did what it was supposed to do and incentivized the developer. And, and we are on the back end of the TIF where everything that was said was accomplished, and the TIF was successful. Is, is that what we're doing here tonight?
Who can answer that?
Or is there...
Christine.
Boo.
That is correct. Terminating the TIF stops the pilots and eats accumulation. And so, now the taxing entities will receive those funds that they, that were previously directed to the TIF to repay the developer.
Good, Your Honor. To me, that sounds like things that our city should be celebrating and, and that, hey, we, we did an economic center all the way through the end. Now it's over, and this is really great for our city. Great, great for staff to pull it off.
I can add to that, Your Honor.
He's going to answer that, and then Councilman, I mean, Councilmember Edmondson. Oh, you don't need to. Okay.
I can tell you, the original vision of this redevelopment center has not been achieved. And the original TIF plan allowed for the developer to receive more funds than what they have, have received. Had they executed, been able to execute and fulfill the original vision of the plan, they would have received the full TIF reimbursement, but they did not. And, but this concludes this chapter of the redevelopment. We continue to have conversations with the owner of the center for hopefully some additional things that will come and breathe vitality into the center. As you know, B&amp;B Theater is not going to happen, and we are, we have had, they have had some conversations with Miller Theater. We don't know if those are going to come to fruition or not. But, so, councilman, I would say this, we are celebrating that this is coming to a close, but it does fall short of the original vision of the center.
I agree. I will suggest that the property value now is worth a whole lot more, and though all those taxing districts are going to benefit from that now.
That is correct, because what was it before the TIF plan was approved?
A lot less.
It was a vacant lot.
I was just going to ask, when was the last time a TIF was ended?
I've been with the city almost 17 years, and it was before then.
Yeah, okay.
So, it's exciting. I agree. One other one. And honestly, the mayor at that time, Mayor Grounds, gave us a trophy for closing out. It was the original Walmart.
And double A highway.
And the double A highway.
Yeah.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Do I get a participation trophy?
Yeah, where's my trophy?
Since it didn't totally fulfill what it was supposed to, there are no...
Maybe a medal instead?
I give you a piano, so.
Okay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries.
Second reading of Bill Number 4661, an ordinance terminating tax increment financing within the Fall Creek redevelopment area, dissolving the special allocation fund related thereto, and authorizing certain actions relating thereto.
Move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
The second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Lavey?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Cole Pepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously and given ordinance number 4819.
Last bill for tonight, introduction, reading of Bill 4662.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor. And I want to note that one of the people that's being appointed has been sitting in the audience waiting patiently for this very last item to come up.
First reading of Bill Number 4662, an ordinance amending Section 110.065 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, to limit the terms of members of boards, commissions, and committees to three years, except as otherwise specified.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, same sign.
Second reading of Bill Number 4662, an ordinance amending Section 110.065 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, to limit the terms of members of boards, commissions, and committees to three years, except as otherwise specified.
Move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
The second.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmembers Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Cole Pepper?